Welcome. Here we are, we're in the September already, right? So this is our September 10th meeting. I'd like to have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay. How did it come? I had, Donna, can I give you a reprieve just a second because I had some other people called me and wanted to be up, or you...
Absolutely.
...jumping at the bit to get up here.
No, no, I just didn't want a minute, you know, no, fine.
Meals on Wheels of High Park is here and would like to...
Share some information.
Yes.
Are we speaking from...
Yes, you need to introduce yourself and tell this wonderful audience who you are and why you're here.
So my name is Paul Hetty.
Melinda Hetty.
And we are here as representatives of Meals on Wheels of High Park, which includes the Rhinebeck community. We both started out after we retired as substitute drivers, soon became regular drivers, and then were asked to be board members, so we're now on the board of Meals on Wheels. And we're here, I guess, for two basic purposes. One is to give an overview and an update on the organization and its involvement in Rhinebeck, and the second reason is to ask for assistance. Overview wise, Meals on Wheels of High Park serves approximately 60 clients a week, two meals a day, five days a week. That's broken up into five delivery routes, one of which covers the village of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck. The organization is run by two paid kitchen staff and approximately 80 volunteers, who are drivers, packers, and board members. Let's see, I think, to get down to the facts about Rhinebeck, just a quick calculation shows that if you do two meals a day for 10 people for 52 weeks, it comes to about 5,200 meals a year that we're delivering to the Rhinebeck area. That's kind of the update where we are. The other reason we're here is to kind of strengthen the connection between Meals on Wheels of High Park and Rhinebeck community. Again, the, I guess the main purpose we're here is to encourage people to...
Right, there's a, I mean, we have a couple of things. First of all, you know, we are open to getting new clients, so, you know, if the community knows of someone, it doesn't have to be an elderly person, it could be a disabled person or even someone temporarily after surgery or something, that would benefit from Meals on Wheels. We do service the village of Rhinebeck and just a little bit outside in Statsburg. The other thing is that, you know, we're always looking for volunteers, and volunteers could be drivers, could be packers, and it really takes like maybe about an hour and a half, two hours of your time, not every day of the week, like we drive every other week.
One day.
Just on one day, every other week, and other people do it every week, other people are subs, and they just fill in when somebody needs the day off, you know, to go to travel. And then the other thing that we're looking for is potential board members. We would really benefit from, you know, the input of people from the Rhinebeck community on the board, and again, it's not a huge amount of time that we're looking for, but, you know, we are hoping to recruit for that, for volunteers and for clients.
So please, if you could spread the news of what the organization does and if you know of anyone who's in need of either services or is in a position to volunteer and get involved, that'd be wonderful.
And I'll, I can email you or we can say, they can call me on my cellphone.
Okay, yes.
Ah, sorry, 845, everybody knows that, 656-3190, Melinda Hetty.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your work.
Again, our pleasure. So, I'm sorry, one last moment, to see the gratitude on the client's faces is incredibly heartwarming. Have the people who write checks and at the bottom of their note that writes "five delicious meals."
Thank you.
Really.
Good night. See you soon.
Donna!
Didn't mean to be so eager. Actually, Donna, good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to share. I'm Donna Warner from Beach Street. Actually, I was here at the meeting in June, and I'm, my comment is relative to the discussion at the June meeting. It was kicked off by trustee Slavy, and it was a general discussion about the board's workload and the many projects underway. I don't know if anyone recalls, but that was a really interesting discussion and about the projects underway, and it's my word, manageability, and the takeaway for me was that a lot is happening. You know, there's always a lot happening, and it's difficult to track it all, even to know like how many projects, or what is a project, actually. And I know that, because I've spent a couple of years here coming to most of the meetings, I know that some of them are maybe short term and some extend over many months, you know, some of the wastewater and water projects. I think some of them cross years, fiscal years and budget years, and others may be humming along in the background, you know, and then it comes up on a board agenda occasionally. So my point was just that even for a resident that may be plugged in, I'm sort of plugged in, it's really challenging to put all this together. And so my question or request is, is there a consolidated list of all the projects or activities or grant-funded activities, whatever, that the public can access? I don't know if you all have access to that, like a tracking form that shows the project, the duration, where it, its status, maybe the cost to the village or the match, then a few other things updated periodically. I do think that having access to this where you can see it all in one place would help make for better informed citizens, and I think that too was part of the civic engagement goals, you know, to have better informed citizens. So that really, and also, I think it would help us, and I certainly did in the June meeting, appreciate how much each of you do. I'm not sure if people realize this, so that's my question, is please consider making something summative available for the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Ma.
Yes?
Is it possible to make a comment without going up here, or do I have to go up here? Okay.
Well, now Chelsea.
Yes. Hello. I'm Chelsea. I'm gonna make this very quick. I'm a resident and homeowner in Rhinebeck and village in the town, and I live right on the town-village line. I have written about this before, Gary, I actually sent an email last year about this, but it's come up again with some of my neighbors on our road. I live on Montgomery Street, right past the hospital. We get an enormous amount of traffic. It's gotten, you know, I've lived here since 2019, and it's right where the speed limit changes from like, I want to say 30 to 35, and we also have a number of, it seems like commercial vehicles, like trucks, 18-wheelers, that kind of thing. And the road actually is the one where Hoghead Bridge is, so there's a three-ton weight limit on that bridge. I'm not sure that road is even equipped for the kinds of trucks we're getting, and at the rate that we, the frequency with which we get them, our houses like literally shake because I do not think that road is intended to support those kinds of vehicles. I know at least one of my neighbors went to the town board meeting last month to complain about this and just express some concern about both the bridge, the weight limit, and also speeding on that road. And so I'm coming here to, you know, to communicate shared concerns that I shared last year, but now want to reiterate with the village for it because I know there must be cooperation to figure out solutions for what is to be done about that traffic. Last year, when we wrote a couple emails back and forth, Gary, you were like, the first line is "transportable radar and police presence," that happened last year. It just happened again when my neighbor spoke with the town, and it's a great short-term solution to calm that traffic, but if the minute the police or the transportable radar disappears, so does the effect. So while appreciated, it's just not a sustainable solution. I think this ties into the comp plan and larger questions the Rhinebeck is grappling with, so I raise it in that spirit, and also I want my house to stop shaking. So, yes, thank you so much for your time.
So Chelsea, we'd like to address one fact though for you.
Yes.
Because we did do some investigation out there. That three-ton weight limit sign that you see is not the bridge weight limit sign.
What is it?
That's for the town of Rhinebeck Road. The town of Rhinebeck has a three-ton weight limit on their road. That bridge has no weight qualification, and if you, it's owned by the town, and if you look in the town's code book, it clearly states as a TBD for the town to define a weight limit, right, for that bridge. So that is a road weight limit on the town road, not the bridge.
Okay, right, and it's right where the village line like is, so I was mistaken, it's not the bridge.
That's understandable.
It's like, the sign is right along the...
I understand, yeah, I know right where the sign is.
Yeah.
I agree. But it's not, it's not a bridge weight.
Okay, well, it's good to know the bridge isn't like gonna collapse or something, but I, okay, great.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. But anyway, I just wanted to, it seems like we, and I know there are studies, like we can actually, like the state tracks the number of trucks and cars on that road, and it's like in the thousands every day apparently, so it's just, it's...
It's a busy road.
Yes.
There's no doubt.
Yeah.
I share your concern on the busyness and the speed of that road.
Yeah.
Very much because speed is a concern for all of our roads, and, you know, the police have been there a little bit more than what you think, but the sign has only gone up at an occasional time with the radar sign.
I, yeah, and I think that I'm heading in the direction of suggesting like a speed plateau or something rather than, you know, the police, actually, were there today, but I don't know, I just don't know what that does in a sort of blasting sense, so...
What do you mean by a speed plateau?
Like a bumper, a...
A feedbox.
Not like a physical, a physical thing?
I have no idea if that's possible. There's a hospital there, like I don't know if that's possible, but something that calms traffic in a more, a more permanent way is, I think, an ideal aspiration, but...
Well, and there's also certainly something to be said about like if you're seeing multiple 18-wheelers a day go down that road, those are certainly heavier than three tons, right?
And I don't know if it's like exactly like 18-wheelers, but they're, they're trucks that are just like massive, and tour buses and stuff, yeah.
Right. They're like more than three tons.
Yeah, exactly.
But that's up for the town to enforce on that road.
I, I hear that, and...
Justice, to be clear, I have a question. Could we look at moving our radar sign down the hill? I don't know where, how much of a clean shot...
Yeah, we have two of those right by the hospital.
We could maybe put that...
Well, they were put there for a reason because of...
The hospital.
Crosswalks and accessibility and everything else. If you would like to purchase another one, please could do.
Well, I mean, like one idea for calming traffic at all of the village gateways is to get signs, like the one at the hospital, just like plonk them at every single village gateway, there's only five of them, but...
You can't do it on state roads, but on that road it can.
Oh, maybe we could get permission from DOT to propose that.
Try. You're welcome to try.
Oh, the conversations I've had with DOT, happy to add that to the list.
So...
But yeah, thanks, Chelsea.
I'm, I'm a huge fan because I think those...
They work.
Solar radar signs that I proposed and put in work very well, and we put them there for a specific reason. Yeah. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Roger.
Thanks, Gary. Dr. Quong, Village. Very brief question, so thank you for publishing the agenda. I've noticed that there were 10 resolutions or one item for discussion, but there are only like seven items posted in the village website that you can review, so why is there a mismatch?
It's up to the trustee who's putting those resolutions together to post data. Either get it to the clerk by Friday at noon, or if not, they need to post it themselves as a supplement, so...
So should we be listed, which trustee is putting forward the resolutions?
Come to the meetings or watch the meeting.
Why?
You can, if the data's not there, send an email.
To whom?
To the village clerk will be fine.
All right, thank you.
There's also a possibility that information, like that the agenda isn't accurate, so there's also that that sometimes happens. Sometimes it changes. Sometimes people pull with resolutions before they move them, so...
Our goal is Friday at noon to have all the data, and everybody sitting at this table is aware of that goal.
So is the agenda accurate now?
What?
Is the agenda accurate for this meeting?
No, it's not, because things have changed since then. You'll see if you want to stay. Any other comment? There are none, we're gonna move on, thank you. Karen?
Maybe I just have a better, can I ask a question?
We're in a public comment. Do you want to make a public comment, Howie?
No, I just want to...
You're more than welcome to come up, Howie.
Okay. My name is Howie Trout. I used to be on this fine board for 10 years, so well aware of what's going on. I just want to ask, because the holiday tree discussion is going to be discussed.
It's on the agenda, yes.
Okay, I didn't know if it was pulled off the agenda, that's why I'm asking.
Last chance. Karen?
The treasurer's report is the period ending August 31st. The tax collector account ended the month with $715,954.80. The general fund ended the month with $101,507.24. The water fund ended the month with $156,095.36, and the sewer fund ended the month with Vouchers presented for payment, including prepaid, and the general fund total $128,679.92. In the water fund, $36,069.56. In the sewer fund, $39,369.3. Espro, $227.50. The capital project sidewalk, $29,867.40. And the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, $17,708.58.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers. Vouchers submitted. Set. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is for the fiscal year 2324. I'm in the process of closing that year, and I'm requesting a, the water is fine, but I'm requesting an adjusting journal entry in the sewer of $1,915.33 to a prior year expense account number 19894.13. And in the general fund, I'm still working on timing that out.
So moved.
Next second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the water and sewer, the bill, September billing went out for the water for $26,975.33, and for the sewer, $35,735.55, with those due on September 30th. Adjustments were signed up by the mayor and are presented for authorization.
Make a motion to approve the water and sewer adjustments. A motion, set. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and just have, I have one budget amendment for the, for the payment for the LED lights, for the principal and the interest payment. We didn't get notified properly, so we ended up paying like five months, and two other months were from the prior year, so...
Great.
It's almost come. So I'm requesting to increase the principal LED line item by $4,982, and the interest by $973, and take that from fund balance, since the leftover from last year rolled into that anyways.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I do have one question, is myip now sending us the bills on time?
Yes, we have, we have an understanding now.
Very good.
And a schedule.
We will pay you if you send us bills.
Yes. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, we're gonna move on to resolutions. There is, there are several changes to the agenda tonight. The first one, trustee Lewitt.
Okay, so we had on the agenda the holiday tree lighting discussion. The Rhinebeck Hometown Tree Lighting Committee has withdrawn its offer to plant a holiday tree near, in a municipal parking lot near the doughboy. And just to remind people, this was a volunteer effort, a group of people came together, they volunteered to remove a dead crabapple tree. We plant with an evergreen tree, purchase and maintain lights for the village, and all of this at no cost for the village. They did this because we can no longer use the bank parking lot where we used to have our holiday tree lightings, but they decided, as circumstances have changed, that they are not gonna, withdrawing that offer, so it's off the table.
All right, comment now?
Yes, you can, Howie.
Okay. Gotta find my email here. Again, Howie Trout. I'm a member of the Sons of American Legion, and I gotta, I gotta say, I'm gonna read an email I sent to my fellow sons. It has come to my attention that the village is planning on replacing a dead tree in Doughboy Park with an evergreen tree that would be lit year-round. Depending on the time of the year, it would have Christmas lights.
Howie, no, that's not true. That's, that's, your factual inaccurate right from the get-go.
Okay, well, that's why I came here.
Right, well, but don't read into the record what's not true.
Okay, you don't, now I know.
Now, you're right, so you could've asked, right, you could've asked, right, what was the question?
That's why I'm here to ask.
You're not asking, you're stating.
Well, I heard it from a reliable source.
Can you name your source?
No.
Why not?
Okay, that is an unreliable, Howie, it's not reliable.
Okay, you corrected me, I don't know what's wrong with that, you corrected me.
Well, you timed your reliable source, and you, now, tell me who it is, and, and then your source turns out not to be reliable at all, and yet you're going and reading all this into the record.
You can take it out of the record, don't put it in the record.
You're here, it's on the record.
Okay, so you're telling me it wasn't gonna be lit monthly?
I told you it wasn't a village proposal.
It wasn't even a village proposal. This was a group of volunteers who came forward because they knew that you can't do it.
Who didn't even come forward, who hadn't even had a chance to bring this proposal to the village board before rumor and innuendo swirled around the entire village to the point where people have now quit volunteer committees, because this is apparently how we treat volunteers in this community, that we just assumed that they're doing something that's going to destroy the community before we've had a chance to talk about it. So like this whole process has actually been incredibly frustrating from my end, because I haven't seen a proposal at all, and all I know is that it's now being withdrawn because of rumor and innuendo swirling around the community. And as a result, we have one really fine volunteer who has stepped down from his position because of what's happened. So nothing has come in front of the, of the village. We haven't had a chance to talk about this, nobody's had a chance to talk about this in the public, and the idea, which was to not cut down a tree every year and instead have a full tree planted in the ground, which is environmentally more friendly, has now been withdrawn.
So, can we back up a minute?
No. So like, I mean, I understand that there's a lot of like concern, understandably concern about what happens in the Doughboy Memorial Park area, and like that is the point of then being able to have a conversation amongst the people who care about the Doughboy Park, which includes the five people, or at least me, sitting at the front of this room. And so not even having a chance to talk about it before it's been withdrawn, because nobody has actually spoken to anybody who had an answer to this question, and when answers were provided, apparently, from what I understand, they were ignored. So I know we just went through a really amazing, tough listening process with the comprehensive plan that took two and a half years, and has resulted in a document that it seems like most people are sort of kind of maybe in favor of. We can't hold a two and a half year conversation for every issue that comes in front of this board, so sometimes things come in front of this board as proposals, and then we have to hold a public conversation about it. This now has been withdrawn before we were even given the opportunity to hold a public conversation about it.
And Howie, this came to attention today, so I'm not sure where you were going or how you started this or what, you know, but it, but today, the chair of the holiday committee resigned.
Okay.
Right, and resigned because this issue was put in front of them without any conversation, any discussion on terms of what actual and factually was going to be done.
Or proposed.
Or proposed, even.
Or even proposed. So the fact that people, and maybe even people sitting on this board, are making up stuff that is not true, right, is not giving this board and this elected group of people a chance to do their job at all. And I'm deeply concerned about how our community is not coming together again, how our community is acting to rumors that, and never try to validate them. Where is the village of Rhinebeck gone that we used to always know and love, that could sit down and figure things out, or could make a phone call and say, hey, what's going on here? Because that's how we work. And apparently, that message has been dropped somewhere. So, Howie, if you would like to continue, please do, and I'll let you, and we'll let you finish, and then we can discuss even further if you would like.
But I think I should also have a...
Well, let me just, let me finish my thing. I just found out about this on Friday, okay, so, and if it's a rumor, it's a rumor, okay? But that's why I came to the meeting Tuesday.
But you sent an email to everybody in the...
This is the email I was reading.
Right, to everybody.
To everybody, the Sons of American Legion.
Sons of American Legion, so an email based upon a rumor.
So people send emails based on rumors all the time, don't they?
No.
I didn't know it was a rumor until right now.
Are you aware that on that committee, there are veterans on that committee who are in favor of trying to do something for the benefit of the village?
I am too, because you already finished, I am too.
And these are people who are served as veterans, who are working to help make this village a great place to live.
And I am too.
Okay, I, I really want to interrupt here, because I did offer a while ago, I said, I could see that this was not heading in a good direction, and I said, why don't we set up a committee? I said, I'm Park's liaison, I would be happy to set up a committee. We could bring in all of these different stakeholders, get some community people involved, so we can sit down and discuss this whole process, and then come up with some kind of a proposal, instead of this idea that every, he was talking to her, she was talking to him, he was talking to, and it went round and round, and of course rumors get started that way, and I felt that, and what's lacking here is a process. We didn't have a good process.
This is not our process, this was a volunteer...
This is not, this is not the village, this is a committee that was coming forward.
A group of people came together spontaneously to offer this to the village.
Right.
They're not running it, they're not doing it, it was their idea.
It's not, it's not, it wasn't on our agenda to do. The fact that you, being on the Park's liaison, I thought would have done your research to understand also the history of that area, so that you knew what was going on, and knew how to properly position it, so that we had facts to work with. And as trustee Slavy just said, we don't have two and a half years to talk about every dead tree in the village.
We didn't have to take two and a half years. This was, this is a, this, if you go on the village website, it says something about our beloved Doughboy, and it says that this is a very, you know, well-loved and well-known, you know, centerpiece of our village, so this is something that people can get emotional about. So I don't see what is the problem with asking some people to get together, and I, you know...
We don't have a proposal to work from, Eleanor. That's the issue.
No, the issue is...
You're not allowing a proposal to come forward that we can even deal with.
And it wasn't a village proposal. We're not in charge of it. Village was not proposing anything. This is a group of people who wanted to donate something to the village.
You sat on this board to say, you know the process. Let the... You sat on this board to say, well, you know the process, let the process work. You're saying there's a lack of process, but let the process work.
I am saying there is a lack of process, yes.
You're not letting a process work, because the process hasn't even happened yet.
Well, because I got it.
And then today.
I asked to see the proposal, I asked to see the diagram.
You got, when it was available, you get it, and the information went out to you as the latest information, when it came in, you got it. So, when you were informed, you were informed, yes, there's a document that went out last week, because you do see seat on it.
That's fine, so the.
So, but you got it, Eleanor, don't say you didn't get it, you got it, you got it, everybody else got it.
But the committee didn't get it, it wasn't posted.
So I think the interesting thing that's happened here is that a proposal was going to be raised tonight, that is now no longer being raised.
Correct.
We were gonna have an opportunity to talk about how we wanted to handle that proposal, that opportunity might have included, hey, maybe we should pull together a committee that includes the park liaison, and a member from the Sons of the American Legion, as well as the Holiday Tree Lighting Commission, as well as perhaps a member of the tree commission, but now we don't have the opportunity to take that step, because the proposal has now been withdrawn. So, sometimes, communication happens before a proposal is raised, and sometimes communication happens after a proposal is raised, but I think what happened here was an absolute failure of everything, and, you know, and.
But we as a board have not had the opportunity to do our job.
No, 100%, and that's frustrating.
Fair.
And like, and I don't know where all the rumor sort of swirled from, and, you know, there's this thing out there, and they're gonna destroy our park, and it's like, just the assumption that that is what this board would do, is sort of.
And comments on Facebook, that were misguided and misdirected as well. Yes, I am, Roger, I'm directing it to you.
All right, so I asked a question, why is to have nine resolution or 10 resolution items and only seven items? If you're gonna put an agenda out, put the associated material. Now, you're making a big deal that the committee like withdrew their offer or so on, and that we don't love Rhinebeck, so on and so forth.
I don't say you don't want Rhinebeck.
You have a failure, you have failed as a board to respect open meeting laws, and not post associated material with the agenda, so you're left to ask what is going on. And I ask on Facebook, all I ask on Facebook.
You asked on Facebook, did you ask any of us?
Did you call anybody who was involved?
Yes, I called you out, Gary, I asked, can you?
On Facebook, you called me out. You didn't tell the.
We have emails, we have photos.
Didn't tell anyone.
There's some tree going into the Doughboy, or some change is happening at Doughboy, there's no public information, on the agenda, there's nothing about the Doughboy Park, you can't like divine that, so I asked for some clarification, who knows? Why couldn't you put that in the meeting agenda, or in the file folder for the village?
Did you genuinely believe that we were gonna vote on something tonight that involved a judge to the Doughboy?
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about two and a half.
Absolutely, yes.
No.
I'm.
You've done it before.
I'm very sorry.
When?
To think.
Village Court, Rick, forget that one.
That would've been a good one.
So.
You're complaining about a withdrawn proposal?
We're complaining about the process around this, so why?
You're complaining about a withdrawn proposal? What is there to complain about if it's been withdrawn?
Good point.
Nothing at this point, except that we've now lost.
So why are you complaining?
Because we've now lost a fairly vibrant volunteer to this community because of how this has occurred.
That tree will not get there, I can assure you that, but the point is, the proposal has been withdrawn.
That's true.
What are you complaining about, something that doesn't exist?
Ask Howie, Howie came forward and wanted that.
We are informing you that, yes, this is emotional, it's emotional to me, not that I'm a veteran, but I was a child in Europe, and I am deeply appreciative of the United States Army, I have spoken to every veteran of the World War II in this village, and there is no way I will stop. If the veterans of foreign wars disapprove, I will muster every possible strength that I possibly can to stop it. However, that's not the issue, the issue is that you're complaining about something that does not exist, because you are all offended, because of something that does not exist. What you should be doing, all five of you, is understand why this village is so angry with you. That is a very good question. You have got to figure out what the answer is. That's not it, this proposal is not the issue, the distrust in this board of trustees is the issue.
One second, were you consulted?
You are insulted?
No, I said, Mr. McGuire, were you consulted?
Me?
No, 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 Isabel, I'm talking to Dennis.
Talking to Dennis?
Yes.
Hi, Dennis, Dennis McGuire, commander of American Legion Post 4 tonight. I handle things, when rumors are out there, I go to the source. So I couldn't get right to the source, but I wanted to be here tonight to see where we are with this. That's, excuse me, that's very sacred ground over there.
Absolutely.
And I was on top of it, this young lady and myself, we walked over there, I wanted to get the feel of what was going on, the words, and to see what was, wanted to be done to that pit, sacred piece of ground. So I said, we'll handle it, our membership will be informed about it, and I will be at the meeting to find out where we are with this. And some of the final drawings of, this is what it's gonna be, and that's what it's gonna be, that's our proposal. And, so here I am.
So Dennis, I'm asking you a very specific question, did the previous chair of the Holiday Committee consult with you?
The previous chair?
Brian? Brian?
Oh, yes, we spoke.
Brian, you and Brian spoke on several occasions, correct?
We spoke today.
And even before this?
Oh, yes.
And you gave him a thumbs up, correct?
Yes, at the procedure house.
That's what I wanna know, that's all I wanna know, is that we, they, reached out, not we, they reached out, and talked to our veterans committee to make sure that whatever was being proposed was agreeable, and you gave it a thumbs up.
Yes, sir.
That's it, thank you.
But it withdrew, withdrew according to you?
Not according to, not according to me, no, the chair of the committee withdrew the proposal, yes.
All right, it withdrew, there's nothing to discuss.
Well, Howie, do you have anything else?
Yeah, okay, just to echo Dennis, it's my belief that this park is sacred, honors our veterans, and should not be shared with a monthly changing light display, which you have told me is not true. I have four family members listed on the monument, one of them is my uncle Roland Trout, buried in France, and those are my father and his two brothers. Now I'm getting like Dennis, I'm not against the idea of this tree, but feel that there could be a better place for it. And if you want me to buy the tree, if you find another place, I'll pay for it, okay? If the other person is withdrawn, I'll pay for it out of my own pocket. So maybe I do care about Rhinebeck.
Let's go, let's, yeah, wait, let's go look for a spot.
Okay.
I'll do it with you.
I already have one of mine, right Dennis?
What do you have? Where?
Right here, if you look into, at the firehouse, right to the right, there's a tree there, we can take that one down, put a big evergreen tree there.
Okay, we'll check it out, if it works out, I'll take you up on that offer.
Okay.
One, one thing that became apparent as part of this conversation for the last few weeks is, the village has nothing on its books, no laws, no regulations, nothing, about how to handle trees planted that were in the memorial for someone, memorial areas, memorial benches, we have no process in the village about how we create memorials, how we maintain them, how we decommission them, if that's appropriate, if it's a live memorial, like a tree, what do we do when the tree dies, we have nothing in the books about this. And that concerns me, both as a lawyer and as a citizen of this village, because when a conversation like this comes up, it's hard to know how the, like, it's a little hard to know about where to begin. And so, I think it's a good idea for us to discuss and create, and ideally pass, some laws about how we are going to handle the memorials in the village, that are on public space. Because we could lay out a process in law about how to approach this, so that it's agreed upon by everybody in advance, so that rumors don't swirl, and volunteers don't quit, and that hackles aren't raised, because this is a vitally important part of the community, I don't think anybody doesn't have respect for that space. So the question is, how do we handle that space when it is a living space that has living things in it? And, that is something that I would like to see the village think about, and whether we do that as part of a zoning code update, or what, but that is something that I think is important for us to do, because the Doughboy was moved, what, 25 years ago or so?
1999.
Right, and, you know, and it seemed like it happened through a wonderful volunteer effort, onto a part of the parking lot that is now a lovely little park area, and, you know, those trees were planted, and now at least one of them is dying. And from what I understand, the tree that you just suggested in front of the fire department is also a memorial tree, according to members of the fire department, and so, you know, do we take that tree down and place a different tree in its place? And so I think there's sort of, we're, you know, the beauty of a small town is that sometimes things happen without government laws or regulations, but then, you know, there's a reason why laws and regulations are helpful in certain conversations, so that is something that I feel like we need to do.
So Eleanor, as the park liaison, I would think it'd be in your best interest to figure out what we need to do with that space, since it is not a park, it's never been dedicated as a park, it's a part of the municipal lot, if you wanna be the park liaison and do something, figure out a process for that space.
I just wanna add something in, this is, there is, at least on the version I looked at, page 57 of the comp plan.
Speak up, Eleanor.
Page 57, is that better? Page 57 of the comp plan, is that better? Okay, all right, on page 57, there is a plan there, it's a, it's a plan to, it's a temporary, it's called a temporary plan, and it's to close the exit to the municipal lot, but make the entrance two-way, and if we did that, that would free up some space in that corner there, which is actually quite a big space, where we could plant a tree, where it would not be in the park, in the Doughboy Park, but it would be, it would be in the municipal park, and so it could be part of that celebration that people plant there, and so on. So that might be an alternative, it wouldn't happen right now, because we would have to wait for a budget, and we'd have to budget money for it, but that's another possibility.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Okay, Pat?
May I speak?
Sure, I just called on you.
Thank you. Pardon my appearance, I was working. I'm Pat Coon, I'm a town resident, past village clerk, I worked here for 23 years, I worked here in 99 when all Doughboy project happened. It wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for my late husband, who was a CB, three tour Vietnam, who raised the funds for that Doughboy to be moved, to be restored, and to have those plaques done. He was very upset that Rhinebeck, with its strong history, dating back to pre-revolutionary war, did not have a Veterans Memorial Park, and that's what the, the goal or the vision was, for that, the mayors that were here, which was Cunningham, Milik, and Costa, and even rearing all the way down, when that project was being done, was to maintain it as sacred ground. It, there's nowhere in this village that you can go, and I appreciate the fact that that statue is on the, and there's a name of it, but there's only three in this country.
You referred to Duitt Grinnell Park?
Yes.
As it was referred to?
Yeah, it was referred to as the Duitt Grinnell Park, the trustees at the time when the Doughboy was moved, they had tossed around other names, the Veterans Memorial Park, the Alan Coon Veterans Memorial Park, because he had done it, there was a whole bunch of different names that they had tossed around, to make it an official park, but the process never proceeded. I'm on the tree lighting committee, I'm probably the only one here that's on it, I found out today, because I was away, that Bryant Nap had withdrew, does that mean that they withdrew the event application as well?
Oh, no, there's nobody, there's no leadership now, so nobody's in charge.
All right, because I knew our last meeting was canceled, and then, I didn't know, because I was.
We don't know either, Pat.
Okay.
We're hearing about this today, Isabel.
Okay. I'm here, not so much for the tree lighting, but for the Doughboy. That was in a very emotional time, to have that moved, to have it restored, to have the community as a whole earn and save, and pennies, and nickels, and dimes, and quarters, and dollars, to raise the funds to restore that monument. Alan Newman built that monument, it was found by Duitt Grinnell in a barn, that was brought back here, and the Rhinebeck people valued it enough, and Costa was mayor at the time, valued it enough, to put it in a prominent spot in the village. And I walked by there, and my late husband, who died eight years ago, his name is on that, in front of it, and I see people all the time stopping to look at, to read the names, and to comment, and I am so proud, not just only of my husband, but of the hundreds and thousands of men and women that have sacrificed from this community, their lives, their souls, their bodies. I think we need to protect that, we need to protect that with every bone and every ounce of our being, because if it wasn't for them, what would we have? You people wouldn't be sitting here, we wouldn't have the flag flying, we wouldn't have anything. But we have to value it, and we have to not look at a tree as a political pawn, or as a communicating, you know, let's put this light on it now, and this light on it, to make it into a flashy neon sign, we don't need that, we need it to be valued, and to be revered, and to make the community proud. And I'm giving, and I'm not a resident of the village, but I'm giving my trust into the board to do what's right, and to use your power to make that as part liaison, to make that into something that is valuable, that will be protected, so that the next board, and the next board, and the next board doesn't decide, oh, let's take the Doughboy down, we don't need that, we'll make it into more parking spaces. Baloney. That needs to be trust, that needs to be valued, you have to dig down. I don't know if you have veterans in your family, but my husband lost his life because of Agent Orange, and I value that.
And I don't think anybody disagrees with you.
Pat, Pat, I too, when I'm sometimes by the Doughboy, I see people who are clearly not from Rhinebeck.
Oh, I know.
Come, stop, read the names.
Yeah.
Look, take a moment, and it, and it really, I mean, I stood there and I watched people.
Do you feel proud when you see that?
Excuse me?
Do you feel proud when you see that?
Of course, and I, and I've read it many times, I've read the names on there many times, and thought about the names that are on there, absolutely, and, you know, there's no question that that is, the Doughboy is meaningful, with deep meaning.
But it needs to be protected, that statue is priceless.
Absolutely.
Price.
Nobody, nobody here, at least I hope nobody here disagrees with that at all, because we worked hard to. Because we worked hard to restore it and keep it there and do everything we could. And you were working with me, so you and I were the first ones that went out and sought money to even refurbish it. Remember that, Pat?
Yes.
Yes. So we have done everything we can to do that. But I want to ask you a question. As a member of the holiday tree committee, the question, the thought that what we've heard was that that tree could be used for breast cancer awareness or something like that came out, came out of the committee.
That I don't know. They brought me on because of my, if you remember from last year, there were vendors that they had, they had like six vendors. And they brought me on because of my expertise with vendorship.
So you were involved in the discussion of how the tree would be used?
No. I just knew that they were, it was going to be the holiday tree light with the vendors. I didn't know really what the
I'm just trying to understand the facts.
That's all I know, and I've been to two meetings, so.
And again, we all appreciate the work that Allen did because that created a monument that, there's only two others that I know of in the world, right?
Yes.
That exist.
Ours is one.
Ours is one of three that we need to protect and preserve. And we are always going to, we are always, at least in my mind, always intend to do that. Because I worked with the veterans committee to put a flag up there, right? I worked with the veterans committee we had to help, and you were on that committee with me.
Yeah, I can't be on it anymore.
To help keep that going, to help that keeping going, that area what it is. So I think we all are on, I think you and I, and I hope the others are, are on the same page.
I tried to stay on the veterans committee, but I'm not allowed to because I'm not an actual veteran.
We changed the rules, so we want veterans to be able to be first. Okay. We spent enough time, one more comment, Hallie.
Talking about protecting that area, and you also say it's not really a park, so.
It's not.
So how can we make it a park?
I've asked, I've asked, the liaison to the park to, rather than have me do the research and do everything that I've done to help inform what is there, because I would hope they would have done the research themselves, but I did the research all the way back with Mike Fraser to the beginning of time on how that and what has transcribed to be what it is today. To be a park, it has to be designated as a separate space, right? Needs to be registered with New York State because that way you can't do anything to the park because it's registered at New York State. Legion Park, Crystal Lake, registered with the state. Mini Park, registered with the state. You're not allowed to sell, transform, do anything unless you get state approval once they become a park. That's, that unfortunately, as Pat said, that process never culminated to its finish. In fact, Mayor Costa was the first one to call it the Duitt Memorial Park. But that was the only reference to anything, anywhere that we could find in all of our history for the village of Rhinebeck. And we did a deep dive to try to understand where the premise here. Because that, you can't do that without knowing the history. You can't move forward without knowing the past. You can't move forward unless you understand how it got to where it is today. Because that's important, because that's just as important as everything else. So I did that, and I've shared that with the board here. So that it can move forward. And maybe the comprehensive plan will have a plan coming forward, and maybe we could do something in between. But I'm asking the park liaison, rather than to step in the way of the process, to take a hold of the process.
So it's feasible that we could designate it a park?
I have no idea what the process is, Hallie. Somebody has to do it, it can be done, yeah.
It's possible, okay.
Parks exist in this state and we can create a
Can we look at maybe next month having an answer as to what the timeline or
You gotta ask trustee Popco.
Trustee?
Eleanor.
So we can look at next month having some kind of answer as to what it would entail or how long timeframe for that to be a municipal park? Can you verbalize that, please?
Yes, I should.
Okay. I think we belabored some Okay, thank you. Because I think a lot, we're mostly all involved and for the same reasons. Thank you for participation.
Rick, you got my number, right?
I'll look it up. So, but now you see there, so I need to know there's more.
Okay. We're gonna move on. The next thing on the agenda for the board is the revisions to the Locust Hill agreement that we have, okay? So just to remind everybody, Locust Hill, the workforce development in the town, we, the village, have an agreement with the developer that we will supply them water and wastewater for the process, okay? So there's been a couple minor changes, well, maybe minor changes, but a couple of changes to the agreement that we proposed several months ago when this process started. And I'd like to identify those changes. And the first change is to the service initial hookup fee. So in consideration by payment of Locust, $880,000 for the privilege to do this, excuse me, they have requested to break it up into two payments of $440,000 each, right? And upon first, one would be the construction for the development and then the second payment upon complete, upon connection to the village's water and sewer system. So change number one. Still $880,000, just divided into two periods. One, when they get the approval, the second one they complete, okay? The second change is in our previous contract, we didn't have any provisions for fire and the use of fire hydrant water. Should there be a fire there, because they are on, just to remind everybody, when we set up Locust Hill, we're putting in what's called a master meter. So a master meter means that there's only one meter servicing the, all the units there. Each unit doesn't have a meter on it that we read. So the developer, that meter, the developer pays us whatever goes through that meter to feed the establishment, right? That master meter then becomes a property of the village when it's completed, with all the easements and accessibility and everything, but it's their responsibility to put that in. But like other places, we don't bill for if there's a fire. And when vast amounts of water could be used to fight the fire and respond quickly, we don't do that. So there's a provision in the new contract to say, except that fire flow water and water used for hydrant flushing shall not be included in the calculation, okay?
What number was that?
That's under rates for service. I just want to point out that we kept in the contract the definitions of the water main, the definition of the sewer main, which we just talked about. Next change, what we had in the previous contract was that we gave Locust Hill 10 days to make a fix. 10 days is too long if you're that person that's living in Locust Hill to be without some water. So if the developer doesn't respond in two days, we will go in and then bill the developer. So the change from 10 days to two days. Understood? Questions? Okay. And then I also want to point out in number 16 that we kept in there, just to make sure that everybody's aware, is that future town improvement district, that the developer will continue to petition the town to create a sewer water district for that service area, right? So that's a provision of the contract that we specified and still retains. They are the changes that have been made in the recent, latest contract. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agreement. Second. Discussion.
I just wanted to know, is it usual, is this the way we always do it? The sewage pump station and sewer force mains are being installed. And they're installing them, but then after that, we're responsible for them? Is that the way it normally is?
It varies. The gardens, for instance, the agreement that was done with the gardens, they own and maintain that responsibility, right? The agreement with Aster, we own and maintain that responsibility of pump station. In this case, we would like to have control over what goes into our plant. And the only way to have control over what goes into the plant is to own that and maintain it. So yes, that's been a provision that's been in since the beginning. And yes, it is what we've done many times before.
And that's part of the
Yeah. They have to install it and they turn it over to us.
And they pay? Yeah, they pay surfees.
Right.
So something, if we didn't have to do that, then would we raise their rates for a certain period of time or anything like that?
If we did, no. No, we take order full, just like we do for others. Calculated in the fee that we charge them for water and for wastewater, it then becomes our responsibility then to maintain that. You've got to remember, we charge them not the rate that everybody here is being charged. If you read in the contract, they get charged 125% of the rate. So they're paying, it's taxed.
And is that what the others, what you mentioned, the gardens, they all pay 125%?
I think they're 115%. Don't count me on the number, but it is greater than 100%, yes. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lydia, how about the Spectrum agreement?
Oh my lord, speaking of fun things. So it's pretty, you know, it's per the resolution. Our village attorney and I have been working with Spectrum, otherwise known as Charter, for the past few months. We've, the village of Rhinebeck have had a franchise agreement in place with Time Warner Cable since March 1991, granting the use of village rights of way to Time Warner Cable and its successors to provide cable television service to the property owners of the village. The agreement that we have with Time Warner Cable has been updated a few times since 1991, but not really since the early 2000s. And Time Warner Cable no longer exists, and it is now Charter/Spectrum, Spectrum Northeast LLC and indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications. So Spectrum came to us and said, we would like to bring this contract into the 21st century. There's, the Federal Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984 is constantly being amended. It's important to make sure that our contracts agree with that federal law. And so this, I'm basically proposing a new contract that is, would be with Charter/Spectrum that would fully fully replace the TCI agreement. It is substantively, for all practical purposes, for the village and for village cable subscribers, exactly the same, except it gives the village slightly more control over tree maintenance, which we're always trying to have more control over tree maintenance. And otherwise, it's cleaning up a bunch of stuff as a result of the Federal Communications Act of 1984 that is constantly being amended. This, I don't know if you all, for those who pay attention, so Donna. But about, about two years ago, this showed up in front of us because Spectrum renegotiated with Redhook, both the town and the village, as well as Tivoli, as well as the town of Rhinebeck, about pouring more money into Panda, the cable, our cable access company. And so Redhook agreed with Spectrum and they updated their contract. And as a result of that, it was triggering an event for Panda to have an influx of cash, which is great, we all love Panda, they're here taping us today.
Thank you, Pat.
And so this agreement doesn't have anything having to do with that. It's more just bringing us into the 21st century and making sure that this contract works. In order to pass a, in order to adopt a contract like this, in order to sign a contract like this, we have to hold a public hearing on it. So I am suggesting that we hold a public hearing on, at our next evening board meeting on Tuesday, October 8. We could do it at 6:00 PM. I can't imagine we'll have a huge number of comments on this. But who knows, we might have some federal communications experts who might have some thoughts. So that's what I am suggesting. Okay, great. So the resolution has a lot of whereas clauses, but now therefore let it be resolved. The village board of trustees sets the public hearing for the Spectrum agreement for Tuesday, October 8, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Okay, I make a motion.
Shall we move? Second. Any discussion?
I don't have a problem with having the hearing that day, but I did have some questions about some of the language, but should I wait till that day?
No, now is the time.
No, as now, yeah, because we can't
We're in a discussion period.
Yeah, if we need to make any changes to the contract, we would want to make sure.
Well, I was looking at the new, the new definition of gross revenues.
Yep.
That number four, any exclusions available under applicable state law. I don't know, it just seems like such a vague opening that you can drive a truck through. I was just wondering if there's any way to get that out of there?
No, unfortunately. Because as with most things having to do with village government, state law trumps. We're only allowed to do whatever the state wants, lets us do, very specifically. Villages are incorporated into the laws of New York State. We're only allowed to do what they've given us permission to do. And so if something happens with New York State communications law, we have to abide by it.
Which I agree, that's why I was wondering why it's even in there.
It's part of the agreement that you need to state that? All right, so Eleanor.
I can double check with a lawyer on that.
Eleanor, just unfortunately, you were not here when we debated this two years ago.
Yeah.
Ad nauseam in terms of the franchise agreement that is required, right? And, you know, because the whole thing with this trigger was, do we want to change the franchise agreement? And as a board, we voted to keep the existing franchise agreement intact the way it is. What Libby has done is cleaned up, you know, in terms of what she defined as who the owners are, rightful names, you know, and give us a little bit more teeth on trees, which is the ability that we can make changes to.
Then the other question I had was language about abandoned equipment. And I was wondering, that seems to be a new thing, that utilities are, and so on. They're doing that, like Niagara Mohawk crossed my property. In the new contract with the new easement, they say they can abandon equipment. It's like, whoa, wait a minute. You can just leave wires, you can leave posts to just drop. So I'm just wondering if there's any way to, to make sure that we're not going to be stuck with
So, yeah, so this one says that grantee shall not abandon any cable service proportion thereof without the grantor's written consent. So as part of that written consent, we would discuss the terms under which they were allowed to abandon it. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Lydia.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Vanessa, you're up.
Sorry, you pressed. So I'm presenting to the board the RFP that we brought forward last meeting. This is now finalized. We did get input from our working group. This is to send out an RFP for a community choice aggregation administrator, a program administrator. So I'd like to make a motion that we issue the RFP on Monday, September 16.
Second. We got it. Any discussion? Anything else?
Very detailed, and there was just one comment I had, which I sent to Vanessa, which is that I just want to make sure, I think one of the most important things is that people can opt in and out without penalty because that will give them confidence if they try 50%. Hopefully, they'll see, oh, this isn't really costing that much, I can go to 100, rather than having to immediately, you know, make up their mind one or the other because they're afraid they're going to have to pay a large fee. So I just want to make sure that people keep that in mind.
Yeah, thank you for that comment, Eleanor. This is fees. And the ability for people to opt in and out is definitely something we would discuss with any people that bring forward proposals. But just to point for clarification, I think that if we do move forward with a community choice aggregation, it would be the board deciding whether we want to go for 100% renewables or 50% renewables or some other mix. I don't think that the end consumer, the end rate payer would have the choice to select between them. I don't think that the end consumer, the end rate payer would have the choice to select between the number of plans. I think it would just be one for a contract of, say, two or three years. But those are the types of details that we would be negotiating and discussing as a board and with the administrator.
I was at the town, at the town hall when they, when they did the presentation and you had three choices, 100%, 50%, I believe, and then just whatever they normally so did. That's why I was.
And what, how will we determine, as Vanessa said, when we get to that stage?
I'm just saying, it wasn't, if there was a choice. There wasn't choice, but I'm just saying, I mean, it could be different.
Okay.
One of, one of the most important aspects of, if, if we award this contract, is that, that the, this entity is responsible for communication. And every resident gets a letter and it has to be an entire campaign so that people understand what community choice aggregation means, what their role is, what their options are. It is, if you look at all of the enacting legislation and all the things that people talk about, making sure that everybody understands what's going on is fundamental to getting the program off the ground. And it's really, as we talk to people, it was really, really emphasized. We saw that, that there's a lot, a lot of communication, so people should not, you know, this is their job.
All right.
Just, I have a question. The RFP is for what?
The RFP is for a CCA or Community Choice Aggregation Program Manager, Administrator, rather.
And is that like a paid position or?
No, we're not paying them.
Okay.
Basically, an organization can go forward and submit a plan and come, and come to us.
Oh, got it. And then you're sending it out on the 16th. Did you want to have a due date for that?
Yeah, so here the, I don't know if you need all these dates for the notes, Karen, but there's a conference. So you can meet with potential proposal folks. And that pre-proposal conference, RSPD, is Friday, October 18th. And then the pre-proposal conference is Friday, November 1st.
Good. I just missed schedule for me.
Okay. Basically, the final decision would happen December 6th.
Okay.
The, the deadline per submission is Friday, November 15th.
Yes.
That's the only, that's the only reason.
Thank you. Um, and to Roger's earlier point, if he was calling me out, I'm sorry that the, this was put into my folder for the climate smart committee rather than into resolutions. So that might have been worth the confusion. Sorry about that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Thanks, Vanessa.
If you want to, if you want to, you'll be too.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll speak to it, Karen, sure. Also, I'm going to remove from discussion, I mean, I guess we can discuss it, but we don't need to vote tonight, the CEC Police HVAC Resolution. So we're, we're still working with Rich, the village attorney, to add some more details to this particular RFP. So we need some more time, so I'm withdrawing it from a vote tonight. But I guess the update, just to make sure everyone's clear, we have received $60,000 in grants through the nicer to clean energy communities program. And we intend to use that money to replace the HVAC system at the police department. And so hopefully we'll come back next time with a finalized RFP.
Awesome. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Okay, can we move on? Next, appoint chief wastewater operator, Will Caruso. So the resolution basically reads, I'll read it. We currently are using a outside source called Camo to, as a license to operate our wastewater treatment plant, until we have a certified operator. So that's kind of a little bit of the background. So whereas the village of Reinbeck wastewater plant operator, Will Caruso, has completed his certification as a Class II operator, and whereas he has demonstrated that he has the knowledge of our wastewater treatment plant to run operations under his 2A license, and whereas Camo Pollution, who currently is the licensed operator, is in full support of handing the operations over to him. Now therefore be it resolved, the village board recommends that Will Caruso be appointed to Chief Wastewater Plant Operator in charge of the village of Reinbeck wastewater treatment plant. And be it further resolved, that this to be effective at the beginning of the next pay period and his rate of hourly pay to be increased from $28 an hour to $30 an hour.
Second.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
So Camo's signing off on Will?
Camo signed off on Will.
That's so great. I'm sorry, I have to move on.
And we get to promote from there.
Yes.
And does this mean that our contract with Camo go, reverts back to like?
They are still on our own call, you know, Zebra, yes. Rather than being here on a regular basis. I would like to personally thank Will for his dedication to get through this test. This test is not an easy test to take.
He worked really hard.
He worked very hard, right? And was very troubled when he didn't make it the first time, but put his heart and soul into it and passed the flying colors. In fact, the person leading the training session where he went said that he was one of the best operators that he's met in a very, very, very long time. And Camo Hunt's also given him that recommendation. So I, I for one, very comfortable with our current employee, Will Caruso, to take over the, take over the hands of our wastewater treatment plant.
This is great.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is great news.
Okay, we have an offer in front of us, too.
Not planned on schedule, but according to plan.
What?
It's not planned on schedule, but according to plan. Nice when that happens.
All right, so this is a proclamation to Light the Village Pink. This is one that we've done every year, working with, working with new bonds. There's a lot of whereas's in here, but it's very important that this, this recognizes the impact breast cancer has for 30% of 1 in 3 of all new females each year. And the American Cancer Society estimates that there will be 310,000 new cases of breast cancer diagnosed in the United States in 2024. And whereas Northern Hospital is building its breast cancer program using, cutting the treatment protocols and recruiting a team of renowned doctors in the field. And whereas every October during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor those women battling breast cancer, along with their families, to research our healthcare providers whose hard work gives hope to those living with breast cancer. And whereas we want to encourage all residents, government agencies and local businesses to participate in activities that will increase awareness for the fight of breast cancer awareness. Now for, now therefore be it resolved that the village of Reinbeck to proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
I just wanted to add that I had a friend pass away from breast cancer today. So this is, um, this is really serious and everyone, please take it seriously. Get your mammograms. Breast cancer is happening to younger and younger women. She was my age.
I mean, this, this, that's so sad. But what this program will do is rate, not only raise awareness, but also raise funds to help fight breast cancer. So it's all for a good cause, which includes education, risk reduction and screenings.
Start the motion, you second.
I did.
You motioned?
Mm-hmm.
And who seconded?
Oh, I seconded.
Gary, Gary, you seconded. All right, that's what I thought.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next. I'll make this, um, I originally had plans to attend NICOM this month, but due to circumstances that are sometimes beyond my control, I am relinquishing my opportunity to attend this conference at NICOM. And one of our trustees, Lydia Slavy, has said, even though they're all, everybody here is entitled to go, she had now had the opportunity to go, so we are substituting trustee Lydia for my position as, to attend NICOM. Agreed?
Agreed.
You know, things will happen.
We all love spending a week in a hotel conference room.
Is that, you motioned it?
I'm going to make a motion here.
Second, and Lydia second, okay.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Am I allowed to vote on this?
No.
Okay, I understand.
Didn't you second?
Oh, someone else should second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, the other one, so there, I'm just filled with training opportunities these days. The Land Use Center at the Pace Law School in White Plains has a annual land use and sustainable development conference. It's every December. I would like to go. It's just a one day.
We attended last year, didn't we?
I did attend last year. It was so fun, which makes me a huge nerd, but it was super fun. And I came back home and I looked at my husband and I said, I need to figure out how to be a lawyer again. So I would like to go again.
So moved.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Someone else needs to second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
God bless you. I forget when we did this last time, but I didn't repost it because it was already posted once before. And as we have tires that were on our fire truck that are no longer approved to be on a fire truck. So we purchased new tires at a very high cost. But these tires can be used maybe by somebody who doesn't run a municipal service or some other large truck out there. And we posted it before and did not receive any bids for these tires that probably have about 10,000 miles on them. They're old, but they have very low mileage. So I'd like to make a motion to repost the fire department tires and ribs for another bid opening and acceptance for October 1st.
4th?
Uh, October 4th. So I want to repost it now, but have a bid opening on October 4th.
Okay, good.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we have any additional places to put our, put the?
There's surplus. We have to go through the surplus process.
Gotcha.
If you notice, they call them. They're great tires. If anybody can use like, it's huge.
Which truck did they come off of?
I don't remember. I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
I know.
Okay. Next, Eleanor, you have discussion, local law amendment for science and structured discussion.
Yeah, well, I withdrew that when you sent it.
Now, you're saying, generally, you have to publicly now withdraw it.
Yeah, that's what I.
You can't just send it to the touch.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying that I already said that I was withdrawing and I gave the reasons to the board. So, so we're going to discuss that with a larger look at, possibly later on, a larger look at some election issues around how elections and science are, you know, used in the village or regulated in the village.
Great. Thank you, Eleanor.
So done. Okay. Crystal Lake Project funding.
Okay, so at the last, well, I should say, in this winter, when we were scoping out the funding for the Crystal Lake, we said, we made agreements amongst ourselves as to where we take the money. We had carried, last time, we did not specify which, which budget lines we were going to take funding from. So I'd like to make a motion that we take $35,000 from our sidewalk fund, $35,000 from our parks fund, and $9,400 for our parking fund to pay for the improvements at the Crystal Lake ADA and parking lot.
Second. Discussion?
$35,000 sidewalk, $35,000 parks and $9,000 from parking.
Because we are redoing the ADA parking space up there, too.
Um, did you, there was an email that came in late this afternoon from, he has left, expressing concern that the plan is not actually ADA compliant.
That's not correct.
Right, so I just wanted to.
Sure, no, that, as we discussed when we laid it out, there are two picnic areas. The entire pathway will be built to ADA wheelchair compliance standards in the picnic areas. However, there's a small hill there. And so we made the level in will lead to a ADA, with an ADA compliant path, with an ADA compliant picnic area. However, because the hill is a greater slope, greater than what's permissible, ADA compliant.
Greater than 2%.
It's greater than 2%, you can't say that that's an ADA compliant, compliant area. And it is our responsibility under the law to provide comparable facilities for, if there's something that's available for somebody who's fully able to, there needs to be something available for somebody who needs plus different, different requirements.
You need to speak up.
I'm sorry, yes, somebody, somebody has some different requirements. And if we could have made the upper one ADA compliant, we would have.
Right.
But it would require starting to move earth, kind of fair amount of earth, and that was just not in the cards.
Okay. Do we know what the grade on that is?
No, I don't.
I think it's on the plan.
It's on the plan. I don't know. I mean, it's more than 2, it's not 10.
Right, yeah.
4.
Okay. All right, so the path is sort of, the path is ADA.
The path is compliant and the first picnic area is compliant. It's the path beyond that goes up the hill.
Right, so the path is still, the path is still an ADA path. It's just the slope is more than ADA.
Correct.
As for, and so there is a parking area, there's a picnic area that is fully ADA accessible, and then a picnic area that is accessible if someone is willing to push a wheelchair, because the path will be good, but the slope will not.
We cannot, we cannot claim that as an ADA compliant space because the slope up the little hillside there is too great. But it will be, as you said, available if somebody can make it up there.
Got it.
All right, so I motion to use the funds as, as stated, from sidewalks, parks and?
Parking.
Parking.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Vanessa, DEC.
Yeah, I just wanted to show the good news that the state has given us their final stamp of approval to get started using the DEC grant of $200,000 to proceed with our composting project.
Yay.
Very exciting. So we have met with Michael DiCola, who owns the farm, and meeting with Kyle or Amy. And we're coming up with our plan with them and making sure we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed so we can start spending the grant money. And also discussed with Karen, so just very excited.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work there.
All right, special request, back to school. Every year, Reinbeck PTSO holds a back to school event. Michelle DuVal has come forward and requesting for the Reinbeck Central School District back to school barbecue for the entire district and community. It can be held at the, at the Lion's Mini Park to kick off the start of the school year. The event will be on September 20th and event start time is 2:45, period time is between 5:30 and 7:00. 150 people in attendance. They have designated a century safe space, where possible to be able to do that for people that will be there off to the side. I'd like to make a motion to approve the back to school barbecue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye. Next, Halloween parade. It's that time of year, folks, whether you want it or not, it's here. Sunday, October 27th at 2:00 PM, parade steps off at the center, off on Center Street, right here by the firehouse, and prizes for all the children will be at Legion Hall. This is the 38th Annual Halloween Parade. It is hosted by the.
American Legion.
American Legion.
Women's auxiliary.
Women's auxiliary is what I'm thinking of. And also co-sponsored by the village of Reinbeck, because we co-sign on the insurance for that event. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the 38th Annual Halloween Parade being hosted by the American Legion Women's Organization and the village of Reinbeck.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great to watch those kids. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for August 13th, 2024.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, tree committee.
Okay, tree commission. Okay, tree commission.
Yes.
We are a commission, not a committee.
You are correct.
Stand up for our, for our segment. So the fall planting has been scouted out. The, this, this fall, the commission is planning on planting 20 trees at 14 locations around the village, and all of our volunteers have been busy making sure that all the paperwork has been completed and all of the arrangements are being made. It's a, it's a pretty big lift. The planting date has been moved to November 9th, and that's because it's been so warm, the trees are probably going to go dormant later than normal. So they have to wait for the trees to go dormant before they can be dug up and transplanted to us. We will have five team leaders, McJoyce, Chris, Kurt, and Michael, and they will be reaching out to potential volunteers. We also have one application for pruning and removal. That's from 65 Livingston Street for two maples, which are in the median and they're dropping branches frequently. And the tree commission recommends that one of the trees, the easternmost, should be removed. And the western tree, the tree commission is recommending that a arborist, professional arborist be consulted in whatever their recommendation is, either for pruning or removal. The commission agrees to. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the commission's, or accept the approval of the application for 65 Livingston Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vanessa.
Climate Solutions Week is coming up. This is a, a series of events all across Hudson Valley, and Rhinebeck Village takes part as well. We are, our, our main event that we're hosting is on September 22nd at the Strong Library. This will be a workshop for the public to come out and talk about our community-wide climate action plan. So the RSPP can be found at, linked on climatesmartrhinebeck.org. Please come out. I think it'll be a really interesting event. We're also doing a walk to school day. The walking school bus is going back to school September 20th. And then we're also spreading the word about three other events. September 17th, Bill McKibben, very famous author and climate activist, will be at Upstate Films. And September 17th in the evening, a screening of Plastic People at Upstate Films, documentary about microplastics. And September 26th, we are collaborating with the Climate Smart Task Force for the village of Red Hook, actually, as well as Bard College. And there'll be a screening there on September 26th. So all this information you can find on climatesmartrhinebeck.org. And some other updates, I think most of which I've already covered in this meeting. So that's it.
Thank you. Good job. Okay. Personnel, I'd like to make a motion for employee number 21 to buy out 228.25 hours of vacation.
Whoa.
Second.
Holy, boy.
This has been approved, and it's something that we do, and we normally would do, you know, as part of the process. All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
What?
Who seconded that?
Levett.
Okay.
Okay. The best part of the meeting, I think, sometimes. I, I love that there's so many people that work for us, and I like, always like recognizing the people that spend their hard, their time working for the village of Rhinebeck. At first, I'd like to recognize water plant operator, Tom Mueller, who also got a certification this year as a water plant operator. Congratulations, Tom, in two years. So congratulations, Tom, and thank you for your service. Additional at the water plant, chief water plant operator, Brian Alex, 11 years. There, there's a person who just does his job and does it great, right? Brian Alex runs our, is our chief water plant operator and has been for, I don't know how many years now, and is fully certified, but Karen, right?
It's a pleasure to work with him.
Just a pleasure. So he's on top of things all the time. So thank you, Brian, and looking forward to many more years with you as our chief water plant operator. And then, our highway working supervisor, Scott Minn, 29 years. How about a drum roll? Right? 29 years, the village of Rhinebeck.
I was going to say, that's pretty good.
Congratulations, Scott, looking forward to it. All right, I'd like to make, make a motion to adjourn. You want to do anything? You want to mention?
I know.
I don't think it's needed.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.